Call it order to the city council meeting for CDV's Grand Forks. City work session, excuse me, for Tuesday, April 12, 2022 is now five o'clock. So, city clerk, please call roll.
Here's Steve Gander, Council President Mark Holset.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riethel.
Here.
Council Members' Clearance Letter.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark DeMers.
President.
Brian Martin.
Here. Does term corps number one Transit Development Plan update? Terry Kuba.
Um, good evening. Uh, we, I'm kind of kicking off and updating everything that has happened with our Transit Development Plan. We started off this plan, uh, hiring the consultant back in July. And we have been doing a lot of that background work, studying, um, gathering data and getting information about kind of where we're sitting at in the current, in the current realm of things. Um, just for kind of the reference, we're, we're kind of going over a lot of the information that we've gathered throughout this timeframe. Um, and we've done several different steps along the way. Um, the first step was our, our existing conditions. And we have quite a few takeaways. Um, and we're looking at some rather interesting information. Because it's an overview of the whole CAT system, we're looking also at performance indicators. So there, we're looking at performance measures and targets. Um, and we're also reviewing kind of if the current targets and measures are really appropriate or things that we can actually measure. Um, we're also looking at peer agencies as well as transit asset management. Um, looking at the hubs, seeing what needs to be updated there and, uh, looking at other plans, uh, not just what the NPO has done, but what, what the cities have done for transit. Uh, planning in, in any of their other plans. Um, then we're gonna, basically, and then we're also gonna look at the funding. So far, we've been looking at everything. Um, the bit, the best performers of the whole system is basically the routes in Grand Forks. So there, Route Seven, the Route Five, and the, and the Route Three. Although the Route Three does connect to East Grand Forks, um, via the combination of the Six and the Four. We also looked at what is happening with the demand response. And throughout this, we've also looked at both the fixed and the demand response in relation to COVID. Um, as with everywhere across the country, COVID basically reduced the number of ri- how much ridership there is throughout the whole system. We're looking at part of those performances, the reliability of the system. And from all the indicators we have seen in data, we're very reliable and very safe. And there have been other, as we look at some of the other input from people, we'll see the very same things happening. Um, looking at fares, we did look at the, originally, we look at our fare box recovery ratio. And over the years, it has been going down. And with that look, we wanted to ma- make sure we took another look at the 30-day passes and to be able to compare if those are appropriately priced for the service. How we do some of that comparison is by looking at our, our peer agencies. And we're looking at these agencies as being similar to the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks area. So, um, I, I like to point to La Crosse, La Crescent, Wisconsin as a very good, um, peer agency because La Crosse, Wisconsin is, is a very large city and it's over 50,000. And then you have La Crescent, Minnesota, which is a very small city. And so it's very comparable to Grand Forks, East Grand Forks. But besides that, all these other ones have the same population as well. And they also do have, um, similar, uh, college town tim- formation as well as kind of that consistency of using, uh, transit. Basically, the, we, throughout all of these, we will see, uh, kind of a, a downward trend for everybody across the board. Um, some are far more severe than others. And of course, that 2019 and 2020 timeframe, uh, was, is a very sharp point in all of this. Um, overall, this is the whole system for, so it includes Grand Forks as well besides East Grand Forks. And we, some of these comparisons, like the revenue miles per capita, are performance measures that the feds look at for also some, uh, small transit fun, extra funding so that, so that there's extra funding for certain applications. And this one's a analysis of the passengers per revenue mile. Um, once again, we have an overall kind of up-down, up-down with an overall trend of going kind of a little bit down for all our systems. But Grand Forks is pretty much been going down for a while. We're also looking at cost per revenue mile and the cost per trip. Um, we're kind of right in the spaghetti string for those cost per revenue mile. And we're kind of going up in the cost per trip. But this is just for the fixed route. So it's also kind of, we had an original bump because of the, because of the change in our service. And so we were, it would, would have been bumped up. And then the thought process is, is that we would be coming back down a little bit because we've evened out the, all of the, uh, costs from the initial, initial change. Um, but overall, everything's gone up because of 2020 and all the costs for being prepared for COVID. We're, we've found that we're pretty much right along with everybody else, with all of our other peers in, um, fare box recovery ratio. So everybody is kind of moving down, downhill from, from past years. And we're going back from 2013. We did a fare comparison, and though it's hard to see, um, all of our, when we look at a single fare ride, full price, pretty much the same across the board, a dollar fifty per ride. Um, everyone has some form of a reduced fare, uh, whether it's just a straight across-the-board reduced fare or whether they separate, separate out, um, youth, seniors, Medicare, disability, that type, type of thing. The, the difference you can start seeing is kind of in, a little bit in how our peers are dividing out some of those, um, passes and, uh, day passes, you know, number, ride passes as well as so many day passes. That's where, there's some vari- variation throughout the, every, each system. And for the most part, we're fairly similar. Uh, basically with our, our, our data, it's just saying we, the restructure of the routes did improve rider experience. Um, we could use some improved marketing, uh, you know, better match the amount and type of transit service with the need and the demand, as well as refining a little bit our, our passes and fares, our multi-ride and multi-day passes. The next thing we looked at when we were looking at all the data, we were looking at the financial baseline. So we were looking at how much revenue we're getting from our federal, state and, and how much each city is, is, uh, covering local costs. Um, overall, this 2.5 million is for the whole system, not just city of East Grand Forks. Uh, and the same with the total cost for the demand response. Um, we do know that there are some remaining COVID funds available, those stimulus funds. And then with the new transportation bill, we are looking at an additional, additional funds coming in, but those have not been, um, the guidance for that, for the new bill has not been fully, uh, figured out yet by federal highway or federal transit. But we will be expecting additional funding through that. Basically, these are the revenues we're looking at and for each city. And, and so we're, the city, you know, we're looking at percent of cost for the system as well as just for the city itself. Um, as you can see, the state does provide a large percentage of the, the overall revenue for the si- East Grand Forks Transit. These expenses are for the whole system, including East Grand Forks. Uh, these are, are basically what we're looking at for our, these two combined and then this one with, and then this one will equal out to the four million for, uh, expense of the system. And this is, this is operating as well as any capital purchases that are made. So buses, bus shelters, things of that nature. For the most part, we, we find that we're kind of having that even. We're getting the amount of revenue we need to cover the expenses we have currently. Um, but we're looking, in order to go forward in our, in estimating out what costs will be into the future, which is what we'll do next in this plan, is we'll be looking at kind of that, uh, probably a four percent growth, but we'll, most of the time, we, we're looking at a four percent growth that is projected with all the information we have. But at the end of the day, we'll probably only propose, um, for revenues, we'll only propose about a, a two percent growth rate, whereas we'll probably look at a four percent for costs increase per year. Part of this whole thing, we, we did a first round of engagement back in October. And we, we went from it from, with as many angles as we possibly could. Um, we did a public survey, which was available online as well as at the transit stations. And, um, some of our consultants were riding the buses and talking to people and handing them out, handing out surveys to get, get responses from the riders as well as from the general public was the other half of the focus. We had an interactive map. We did ask questions of the decision-makers. Uh, I know I sent out an email to everyone on the council. Um, we asked the operators. We did look at focus groups. We had three meetings of focus groups and we'll kind of get into some of the details. We, we received some of these response. Um, over 50% were currently riding CAT before COVID. And then they were, they had some, they didn't have too much of a change in their habits from that time. And 64% of them don't have access to a vehicle that we were talking to. Some of the questions we were asking was, um, what would make riding the bus more appealing? Uh, that's not just for the riders, but for the general public. Um, and our, our top two there was, uh, serving more locations as well as having the bus come more often was the top two answers, followed by later and earlier service. Um, and we will find that this, this along with that, with the bus connects more to more destinations or shorter distances or more direct service, you'll find will be a, uh, a theme throughout all the answers that we received from everybody we asked about in the first round of, of information. Once again, you know, some of the industrial park was the, was, is a very repetitive statement of wanting service out there. Um, for East Grand Forks, uh, people were just saying better service. And we'll get into some of that, that a little bit later. But overall, it showed that we have opportunities to improve the system. And we can look at kind of some of those, uh, points is, in that is, that the, there was a confusion in finding bus stops and where the system, where East Grand Forks was having people picked up and dropped off and that type of thing. So there's also a need for, uh, improvements in information output. Uh, CAT does have a Prowler app that is not well advertised, so I don't believe it was very well used or known about. Uh, just better transfer, transit information, easier to read, that type of thing. And once again, more direct routes. The decision-maker survey we had, um, we heard many of the same things. Availability of service was a strength, um, timeliness, uh, getting where you can get to, um, and ability to expand the service. The improvements that we were hearing about from the decision-makers was later hours of operation, um, better travel times, increased frequency. Once again, those were all the top five. We heard many of the same things with our community organizations as well as the riders and the business focus group. Um, the business focus group was one of the last groups we met with. And given all the information that we were getting from the data, as well as the input from the writers and the decision-makers and the community organizations, uh, we decided to, uh, go back to the businesses and, with another survey. So this was a surprise survey, um, just to be able to find out it, what, where is the need and the most? And where kind of, we were asking them kind of sections of the cities of where they believe their employees will be coming from, so we could possibly provide some better service ideas. Um, we've, we received, uh, a good mix. Forty percent were small businesses, uh, 36% were large businesses. So small, medium, large businesses were, were reached through this. Um, businesses felt that, 60% felt that their, their business wasn't being reached easily. And so that made it harder to use transit. Uh, and pretty much that same percentage felt that if it was easier and more accessible, that their employees as well as their customers would probably use, might use transit a lot more. Um, so we decided to develop some idea, some service improvements, ideas based on that information, focusing on, uh, route changes to improve efficiency acts and access. Span of service, so how many hours it's run, as well as the different, maybe incorporating a new type of service or, which is micro-transit. And we're into engagement two. Uh, we didn't want to bring those service ideas and just say, here's what we're saying should happen. We want to get input on those ideas before we put them to paper. So we're saying, here's a lot of ideas and we want to hear from you. So we're gonna, we've started reaching out. The weather has changed how we're doing our pop-ups this week. Uh, we're, we're switching our weeks, especially since we had already proposed to do a second round of information on the 21st of April. And the meeting is on, uh, a, kind of a hybrid recorded meeting was gonna happen on the 14th. It's still gonna happen. I don't know how hybrid it will be, if it will be, if we'll be able to come into City Hall on tomorrow night or not, or Thursday night or not. Uh, but we will be getting some of those focus groups back together as well as encouraging anyone who comes to the April 14th meeting or the Thursday meeting and, uh, to come to the 21st meeting so that we can have more direct conversations. And, uh, the Thursday meeting is more about explaining and educating some of, about some of these service ideas we have. We also will have goals. These goals, uh, are new to our transit plan. They encompass kind of a more understandable, more tangible idea for the public. Instead of trying to list out all the federal planning goals and things like that that has happened in the past for this plan, um, we believe that these, these goals will, uh, be more succinct and more relatable for the public and more usable for the public as well as, uh, staff and, and leadership. So we're interested in what people think about these, these goals as well. And the service ideas. Um, the biggest ideas are kind of, you know, that, getting people to understand what micro-transit is and, as well as getting improved efficiency and better access in all the current routes as well as hopefully being able to change some of the hours of operation. Just kind of an overview of mo- micro-transit is. It's, uh, it only focuses in an area. So instead of the actual route going on cer- only certain roads, you'll have this whole area that is, uh, being served by a single vehicle or a couple. Generally, it's just a single vehicle, but you can call ahead, uh, and request the ride on demand, or you can, uh, get it in va- in advance, set it up in advance. It's using technology, it's being flexible. The biggest differences from, say, an Uber or Lyft is where you're looking at, um, that ride will pick you up at, at a corner instead of at your door. It will get you to the next stop location for a fixed route service. So it won't really get out of that area. And it will only be available during the times that transit is normally available. So at this time, it's from six in the morning till about 10 o'clock at night. Some of the bigger ideas that we have is, uh, we're looking at introducing tran- uh, that micro-transit, especially in Grand Forks, in this, uh, north, north area. There's a lot of other areas that could be reached. Right now, we, transit is only going up to, say, a home of economy whenever it's been requested. But there's other areas like the License Bureau that's up that, up on, further on Washington. And there's Hugos in there along Gateway. And we're connecting, you can connect into some of the, the routes that are in the far west side of Grand Forks.
So you're saying they'll just pick you up at a house up there and then, or at a corner?
At a corner.
And then drop you off on a fixed route? Is that what you're saying?
At, at a, at a bus location, yes.
And then you get on the bus after that?
Yes. And it'll be timed so that you can, you don't have as long of a wait. Um, but that's the, for East Grand Forks, that's going to be across, uh, the city of East Grand Forks. So we'll be able to get further into the point area of East Grand Forks as well as being able to reach kind of that, that northwest corner of East Grand Forks a little bit better. And we'll get to kind of a hub, whether it's at the Hugos or, uh, closer to the downtown. And being able to catch the bus over into, in Grand Forks. Um, but yeah, that's, we've had a lot of issues with our, with that Route 12. Um, it's not highly used and it had always been just inside East Grand Forks. Um, so we're trying to find ways to be more economical with the funds we do have in East Grand Forks especially. But we're also looking at Grand Forks and with kind of making sure that it's not as confusing. Uh, for example, we're trying to split up Route Seven so that it's going in one der- two directions instead of just one direction. Uh, the Eight-Nine Route, which is going kind of through UND into the, into the Columbia Mall, we're looking at making sure they're on the same roads throughout this whole route. Um, and then the additional industrial park route would be, uh, an added new route, which would serve the industrial park and hopefully be able to get people connected into jobs and businesses out in the industrial park. Kind of went through that micro-transit. And then the other one would be just having once, one route number going through and staying on the same route path throughout the, throughout the day. There is service, CAT does have service out at UND and they, we've come up with some routes that would enable connection of the UND shuttle routes to the students that are out on 43rd as well as some of the other areas north of campus. And then creating a micro-transit area around the campus for their night service, which would help, uh, with some of that safety and security of, of students getting from point A to point B. And as I said, we're having our, our info session on Thursday. And then on Thursday, April 21st, we're having a, another input group session, uh, that will invite anybody from this Thursday's meeting too. And then once again, we'll be riding the buses next week instead of this week. Just to kind of finish- Just to kind of finish up where, where we're at, we've kind of done a lot of listening and a lot of gathering of information and we're going to take this last engagement and roll it into the future ideas and see where our budgets will be able to implement these ideas. And hopefully we'll have at least another appearance before the final draft. And we're more than open to any input and information any of you have.
Anybody have any questions for Terry or comments?
Just one. I know of some folks firsthand that when you pay attention to this and you get that feedback and you revise your schedule according to their input, it really improves their quality of life. So thank you for doing that. And that's how we're accountable to the people that we serve. So thank you.
Yes.
Does anybody else have anything? I see none. Thank you ma'am. Appreciate it. We're moving the agenda around a little bit because Mr. Murphy has to get on the road here. So we're moving on to number seven.
Thank you.
Update, update on 32nd Avenue Bridge land purchase.
Thank you. I do appreciate that. Yeah, I do have quite a ways to drive and it does not look like it's getting any better. So I do appreciate you around this. So it does appear that once we get to Fargo, it should get quite a bit better. So I just want to give a verbal update regarding the land purchase for the right-of-way for the 32nd Avenue Bridge. Looks like Ron, I believe you just had some information today about the closing is going to be the 26th.
Yeah, the, the, it was, in the purchase agreement was for, is that what you mean? It was for the 22nd. We were supposed to have the abstracts to me from the date of sale on March 22nd. They didn't deliver them to my office. People hate, they're like three, three, three weeks or so behind, so I'm not sure. I just started looking at the abstracts today.
And the only other update is that I have been in contact with the farmer on that and looks like we do have an agreement to continue that on. Just once we get that, we'll just ink the.
We'll just do it again. The agreement and allow for a future. And that, and the continuation, was that at my request or was that their request to sign that?
Anything else on that, Mr. Murphy?
Nope, I think that's it.
Anything to add, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah. And Ron, you stop me if I, if I have to stop along the way here. Maybe our, our citizens don't know what we did there. Ron, is this a good time to have a little conversation about that?
Well, I guess we certainly could. I'm not sure what your question's going to be.
Okay. So the city of East Grand Forks has purchased roughly 64 acres of land on the southwest corner of our flood control system near the Red River. We purchased the land in the corridor of the planned neighborhood intercity bridge. The reason we decided to purchase the land, it came up for sale at auction. We saw the opportunity to acquire it at a fair market price rather than having to take it by legal action from private property owner later. We have high respect for private property rights and believe that public taking of property is always a last resort. Along with respect for private property rights, we believe that the cost and time required to acquire the property will be much less by purchasing it at auction. The land we purchased was acquired in two parcels as follows and the closing is still pending. But the details are tract one, 34 acres. The cost was 15,002.60 per acre. Tract two is 30 acres. We paid 6,300 per acre. Total cost of 707,840 and a total cost of $11,060 per acre. Now to put that into comparison, adjusted for inflation, we gained access to some property for our levy system at a cost of $112,000 per acre. That's 10 times the price that we paid for this land. And that's what we could have encountered if we'd have waited until it was in private hands and waited until we needed that corridor for the bridge that we're going to hopefully construct along there. And so we're trying to be as responsible for our, our community as we possibly can in the use of their dollars. The prices per acre are higher than we're accustomed to seeing for land near here, but this is land inside our levy. And because of that situation, it's a finite commodity and I think we're going to see everything inside the, the levy, whether it's residential, commercial, or just what. It's going to bring a, a pretty good price. The reason we started this effort in closed session is to set the parameters for future purchase. And that was according to the guidelines given by our city attorney and according to our city charter and state statute. One of our goals was not to distort the market for land in our community. We believe that we did not distort the market due to the fact there was another bidder willing to pay up to $10 to our price that we ultimately paid. And there was another, that was close to $13,000 per acre. So it's a high price per acre, but it is the market rate in this community at this time. And finally, no one involved in this discussion on the city side has plans for developing the land other than the right-of-way for the bridge and roadway. The plan is to sell any land not needed for the bridge and roadway. And based on land values around the region and recent sales, we will not need to sell at a loss. So our goal in making this purchase is to be as responsible with the people's money as we can be, planning ahead for future needs and to make sure to spend every dollar wisely. That's why we did what we did there.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Mr. Murphy, anything else on number seven?
I do not.
Okay, move on to number eight. Request for appraisal parcel 83 dot zero two zero six point zero zero.
Okay, this one is kind of a similar situation to that one where we potentially will need to acquire some property for a project. This would be for the roundabout at Bigland and Reinhardt next to Orton's there. So with that particular project and the, the configuration there, the, the access to Orton's would need to be relocated further, I'll call it south, to that property next door to it. So with that, I have been in contact with the owner. He has indicated a willingness to discuss the possibility of selling that for the project. And with that being said, when we typically do a sale like that or we negotiate for acquiring a property, first item we do is to get an appraisal. So I didn't contact Volbridge Property Advisors. They're the same ones that are doing the appraisal for the infill building. And it looks like they will be, the same appraiser that would be doing, the infill building would be doing this one. So they'll send them out and do them at the same time. And they did do, give us a estimate of $2,500 for the appraisal and a timing of about six weeks. Again, that's, the cost for that appraisal, you know, is typically higher than what you would have for a residential property appraisal for a couple of reasons. Number one, it is commercial, this is commercial. And number two, when you're, when they're doing an appraisal like this for a city where we'd be acquiring a property, there could, there is always the potential for having to testify, having to defend it against a counter appraisal and that. So it's more than just, it's much more involved than just like say a residential appraisal. So it appears to be well within the line of what an appraisal of this type would cost. So with that, and if there are no objections, I will contract with the, with Volbridge Property and we'll get that process started.
Do you have any questions for David? All right, move on to number nine, the review of process for a bridge consultant.
Thank you. This is the final item I have for you tonight. And this is for the 32nd Avenue Bridge, as we're all aware. You know, the, there is some potential for federal funding and moving this project forward. You know, we do have a site located. So with that being said, the thought is to get this property, do this project as close to shovel-ready as possible, as quickly as possible. And what I have found in my research on this and trying to work on this is that even with MINDOT, they have quite a bit of guidelines and process and flow charts and checklists for rehabbing a bridge, replacing a bridge, refurbishing a bridge, but not for putting a new bridge in a new location at a new site. They don't do that very often, so there is not a well-defined process for that. So the, what this, so based on that and working with our construction attorney, Kennedy and Graven, the specialist there, we put together a draft request to propose to hire a consultant, which would then prepare a scope of service to move the project to where the design, where we could do the preliminary and final design with that. So this RFP was prepared again with the assistance of MINDOT Engineering, the MPO, Kennedy and Graven Law Firm, and city staff. So this would be the next step. And this would be to submit the RFP to the consultants. We hope to receive proposals from for what we call the peer review. And the peer review is recommended by our construction attorney as a way to find out if we have any problems, errors, omissions, anything like that in our RFP that could result in skewed results or being proposals that are not really apples to apples. So being the fact that this is, the timeline is pretty quick on this and we'd like to keep moving on this. In my discussion with the consultants, a two-week period, two-week time period for a peer review is not out of line. They can look at that and get back to us pretty quickly. And so with that being said, what was in your packet, there, I did receive one comment back from when this was out with, was adding provision in the RFP saying something along the lines of with the possibility of additional federal or state money available for infrastructure projects, time is of the essence. And for us to research if there are studies that could be started before the scope of work is completed and the city would expect the selected firm then to coordinate these studies during the completion and the scope of this project. So the final item I have is I have spoken with Mr. Phelan again across the river. And so once we move forward with this, you know, we're, there'd be no cost for this portion of it. But again, you would like, they have received a copy of it, so they're aware of that. And then when we would engage for the RFP in the scope of services, they would then put it before their council for cost participation. So that is my report and I'll take any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Murphy? Mr. Gullston?
After just reviewing the, the request, I know that you and Mr. Phelan have been in contact, but are they going to, as a city council, approve this so that the scope of the work that comes out is going to be acceptable to both sides? Because we could go through, it could be an effort in futility if you're not going to get at least some type of a verbal agreement that both sides are going to at least utilize the, the study and, and the scope of it once it gets finished.
I guess I, I don't, I can't answer that specifically, but I will say is that I have submitted it to them. This, the point where we're at right now for peer, going this out for, for peer review is still somewhat early in the process. I did ask Mr. Phelan to, to give this to their engineering department and I have not received any comments or complaints about it at this point. So, so unless we get any objections from the engineering firm, I'm going to, based on my conversations with them, assume that they are okay with this to the form.
Anybody else have anything? I see none, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you guys, I appreciate that.
Should we really screw up? Does this, let's just go backwards now? That's kidding. Okay, move back up to number two, consider Fifth and Avenue Northwest and 20th Street Northwest bid results. Mr. Emery?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we received bids for the Fifth Avenue and 20th Street Northwest Street and Utility Project on March 29th. We did receive three bids. The apparent low bidder at this time is Tiger Contracting out of New Folden, Minnesota. We do have some experience with Tiger. He's actually done the last two years, no, he's done the water main replacement project for Water and Light. So we've worked with him on those two projects. As you've seen, kind of from the numbers, he was really close to kind of what my estimated cost was. I mean, he was within about $64,000, which was really close on a bid that size. And then even between the first and second bid, you know, we had a difference of about 216,000. So again, at this point, you know, like I put in the RC, I think we really have three options. You know, we can basically award the project. We could decide that we're going to hold the final assessment hearing, you know, hold that hearing, get feedback from the residents based on the assessment rates. And then decide if you're going to award or reject the bids at that time. Or, you know, option three is you could reject the bids right now and, you know, basically the process stops. So again, I, what I did include in your packet, kind of based on as-bid costs, I did put together assessment rule, preliminary assessment rule based on those costs. So I guess, you know, maybe with that, we'll just kind of open it up if you have any questions for me.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Emery? Anything? Assuming everybody wants to go ahead with the assessment hearing. Mr. Demers?
I guess my only comment is maybe from the perspective of the Water and Light Board. Our only concern is that if, I guess, if the process gets delayed out too much, the, the chance that we won't have a water, a water replacement project in 2022 goes up dramatically based on lead times and, and all those types of things. The reason for that is, is that the, this has been kind of substitute for our normal 2022 water replacement program. So if we're not, my, basically is, if we're going to do it, let's do it. If we're not going to do it, let's say we're not going to do it instead of try to drag it out and move it around or play games. Cause it would really stink to not do two projects or any project for water replacement this year. And like I said, it's not because of whatever, it's hydrants are hard to get and, you know, water products are hard to get, so.
Yes, like so many things nowadays, yeah, what we are hearing is, you know, the suppliers are, you know, they're carrying, you know, hydrants and stuff, but like they said, their supply can change daily too. You know, typically they're saying, I mean, if it's a normal hydrant, you know, eight and a half foot depth berry, nine foot depth berry, hopefully they'll have it on hand. You know, same thing with valves. But if they have to order them, you know, they're 26 weeks out right now with, with hydrants. So, you know, if we're not ordering materials till May sometime, you know, that pretty much eats up our entire construction season, so.
So Mr. Demers, are you saying to award the bid or number two, hold the final assessment?
I don't, I, my point is, is I just don't want it to become a theatrical thing where we pretend like we're going to do something and then we're not because we know that the people aren't going to go for it or whatever. So if we already know that they're not going to go for it, let's just say we're not going to do it and move on. But if we think that there's a chance, I guess it might be worth it. I don't know. I mean, that's, I mean, I'm not trying to cause trouble. I'm just want to state the facts that the ramification of playing a game could get us in trouble on another project.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'm questioning if we did choose the option to go ahead and have the hearing. And with all of the requirements for publishing that ahead, when is the soonest we could have that meeting?
So Megan and I kind of looked at that already. And I think we were thinking probably at like the May 17th, city council meeting.
And you're out to June 17th after that hearing, correct?
Well, we were hoping, I mean, if we held the hearing that night, you know, we're hoping then you could, you know, decide that night then if you award it, again, reject it. But hopefully the decision would definitely be made that night then.
So you award it and then you have 30 days after that, don't they?
Well, by the time you get contracts someplace, you get materials, I mean, yeah, you're, you're not starting construction until mid-June to first part of July, probably.
But we'd have to get through the appeals period is what he's saying. The 30-day appeals period.
Well, that wouldn't be only if there was any objections.
Right, that's, right.
Yep.
The night of the hearing.
The night of the hearing.
Okay. Or before.
Or before.
Yeah, I kind of forgot about that appeal period if we do get an objection, but yeah.
I should have been more specific, I apologize. Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I think the timing is unfortunate, but, but I believe in our communication, direct or indirect, we've committed in my mind to holding this final assessment hearing. I believe that's the message received by the neighborhood. We should, we should follow suit, but I, I hear what everyone is saying. We should, we should follow suit, but I, I hear what everyone is saying about the lead times. That is unfortunate.
I'd say go ahead and compress it to the, the minimum needed for the publishing and whatnot so that we don't jam up the Water and Light in case we don't go ahead with the project.
Anybody else in favor of holding the hearing? Yeah, so I guess that's what we'll do.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Move on to number three, review reported feasibility for Street Northeast. Mr. Emery?
Thank you again, Mr. President. So we have completed the report of feasibility for basically the Fourth Street Northeast reconstruction, which basically is from Fifth Avenue up to basically American Crystal property there. So looking at that, that street, a lot of the infrastructure, I guess the storm sewer, all of that is about 46 years old at this point. Street is in very poor condition. In fact, I think maybe even last summer, I think there was some patching and stuff that had to be done over there just to, you know, basically maintain traffic as, you know, the road had pumped up and was, you know, nearly impassable as you got kind of closer to American Crystal there. But, so what we looked at with the report of feasibility, again, with the storm sewer currently being 46 years old, we kind of in our cost estimate figured we'd probably replace the catch basins, the storm sewer leads. There is some larger storm sewer trunk mains in there that, you know, my thought was we'd probably try to televise those this summer, because if there's an ability to potentially realign it or if they're in good shape, we would just leave those alone because they're gonna be very expensive to replace. So at this time, they're not included in the cost estimate, but, and then for street improvements, again, it'd be total reconstruction, coring out the road, getting in, putting in a, you know, a good gravel base with drain tile and then concrete paving. Right now, that street was about 45 feet wide. I, you know, utilize that width again in the cost estimate just because of the truck traffic and stuff that, that uses it. So, so right now, the estimated total project cost for the storm sewer improvements was about 99,891. Right now, I assume that again, kind of like Fifth and 20th, that that cost for the storm sewer would be picked up, you know, utilizing the enterprise funds. And then the street improvements, the estimated total project cost of that is about 792,612. So that's, you know, what would be, what we'd be looking at assessing. One of the maybe challenges is when you look at that road and the assessments, you know, just kind of when you look at what you have for front footages, end footages, you know, you really only got probably front footages on the, the north side of Fourth Street there. All the properties along Fifth, Sixth, Seventh and Eighth Avenue there, you know, they'd receive more of a, like an end benefit. So with that, it does drive up, you know, the estimated cost per foot for that road. I mean, right now, if just a front foot cost were $466, $466.66 with an end benefit of So again, with, kind of with those costs, with those assessment rates, I did put together kind of a preliminary assessment role, just so you can kind of see what, you know, the potential assessments to the affected properties would be. Again, as you recall, the city had received from American Crystal a petition for these street improvements. So, you know, I guess really the next step in the process would be to, you know, move this ahead and hold the improvement hearing and I guess see based on these prices if, you know, the businesses and such still want to move forward, so.
Mr. DePill? We had approved that Sixth Avenue Northeast project and we delayed that for what, three years that the business has requested?
Yes, I did reach out to Randy Bushy. They were the ones that originally petitioned to have Sixth Avenue done to make them aware of this project, thinking that if, you know, if you could do it as a larger project, maybe benefit everyone just getting better prices. So Randy did talk to MGI Green, I believe it is there too, just on the, the west side of Sixth. And after they discussed it, they, I guess, decided they did not want to move ahead with doing anything on Sixth yet at this point, so.
Anybody else? Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I think about a year ago, we'd had a conversation about some discharge into our sanitary, our sanitary sewer system from this relative area and that we were missing a manhole here. Maybe I'm incorrect, but I, I just don't want to miss an opportunity with this project to install a sanitary sewer manhole if, if this is the right time with street reconstruction.
And I see that Jason just walked out. Jason would have been the one that was dealing with that, so I guess that's something we should discuss with him. I guess all I know at this time, Brian, is, I mean, the sanitary sewer in that area is PVC as well as all the water main has been upgraded, so it's PVC too, but.
We had been talking about a, a higher content of foreign objects entering the sanitary sewer and how that ends up costing the city money at the plant. And I think that, you know, kind of extrapolated into a hunt for where it was coming from. And then, okay, we're, we don't even have a manhole here. It's essentially a blind connection, so we're not really getting to the bottom of it.
For a test site.
For, for a test site.
Right.
And certainly not pointing fingers at anyone here.
And I know Jason has talked to those business owners, you know, to try and make sure they're treating their wastewater, kind of onsite too, before it is disturbed, but.
But if we do have a blind connection in our sanitary sewer system, this is the time to get that manhole placed.
Oh, definitely, yeah. We definitely want to take care of any utility issues before we replace the street, no doubt.
Yep. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions from Mr. Emery? Mr. Johnson?
So this estimate isn't really finalized. We gotta do a little camera work on these?
We'd want to probably televise that storm sewer just to make sure that, you know, we wouldn't have to replace it.
Is that estimate in here?
That, that is not in here right at this time. The storm sewer costs that's are in there. It's basically for replacing just catch basins and storm sewer leads themselves.
Well, before we, we want to move on with this, we want to see the results and see if they need liners or replacement.
Right.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Do you want to ask your question again, Mr. Stewart Hall?
The question was whether or not we should put a manhole on Fourth for sanitary and that one, it wouldn't be required to. It would actually be, if we ever did, it would be on Seventh, Seventh Avenue. So, and we will be in that area or we intend to, if it's approved tonight too, to, for sanitary sewer cleaning and televising. The sanitary line near Fourth there will be one of the ones that's cleaned and televised so we could easily have them go over and do the storm too, as they're already mobilized in the area.
I was out at American Crystal last night on another matter and speaking with Lloyd Kennedy, and he's still very eager to move forward with this if there's any doubt. So Crystal is all on board with this.
Anybody else have any?
He knows what the costs are? Okay.
He does not. I mean, I don't think he'd looked at our packet, but very eager to have it done.
Yep.
Any other questions? I see none, sir. Appreciate it. One more for you. Follow-up and discussion Hawk system.
Okay. Thank you. So if you kind of recall when we brought this forward at the last work session, I believe it was, you know, I'd made a comment that right before I came to the meeting, I'd talked to MNDOT and they had just mentioned that they weren't, you know, necessarily a proponent of, of the Hawk system. So kind of as I promised, I did follow up with MNDOT to try to get just more information on kind of their justification. And, you know, basically I think some of the takeaways I got were, you know, it is a relatively expensive system compared to, you know, the system we have in place out there right now, which is basically that rec, rapid rectangular, rectangular rapid flashing beacon system. They said that they've, you know, have kind of seen or it can lead to, you know, just confusion maybe for both the drivers and the pedestrians, because you do have, you know, different phases with those lights. You know, you got the flashing yellow that starts with, and then you have to go to steady yellow. You get a steady red and then as it starts to go out, you know, you get a flashing red and then it basically goes dark again. So, so there is a lot of, you know, different phases there. So, you know, that educational component would be huge, you know, because again, we got to remember a lot of the kids that are using this are, you know, maybe anywhere from what, nine to 15 years old, you know? I mean, the third graders to eighth graders, I believe, you know, so. And then just, you know, installation of this system at an intersection, you know, where it has been more widely used is on higher speed roads, more mid-block crossings as opposed to an intersection. So there can be issues there too with the vehicles on the side street, you know, being able to see that, that signal. And if, you know, if you visually can't see it, it's gonna lead, lead to confusion too. So, so I think those were, you know, just the takeaways that the MNDOT had. And then they did provide me with, you know, some, I guess, good literature, which I included in your packet, again, just outlining a lot of the pros and cons, advantages, disadvantages of each of the systems, which, you know, I kind of went through and I highlighted. So I don't know that I necessarily need to read them to you because they're in there. So again, just, you know, again, you know, after just kind of doing a little more research, you know, talking to MNDOT, you know, again, I probably have some of the same concerns that MNDOT has and, you know, just don't want to install a system that's not going to function properly. You know, to be honest with you, MNDOT is a huge proponent of the system that we currently have out there. You know, that's really one of the systems that they advocate for, you know, in a condition like this. So, so I guess with that, I'll, you know, open it up to any questions you may have too.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I can go first. And I appreciate the pros and cons and how you laid that out, understand the challenges with the system. And while it may not be the, the most ideal situation in a perfect setting, I, I personally believe it's still our best option for this scenario to increase pedestrian safety. And so I'm, I remain in favor of, of this type of application at this intersection. Thank you.
I do have one question. You talked about stacking issue there, left-hand turns has, why are you gonna, when are you gonna look at that, for one thing, or estimation of what you'd have to do there? Because the islands are there and they go out. I understand that. So how would that be? I mean, it's probably gonna be minimal, I'm assuming, for the cost to lengthen those turn lanes or not?
We could either, you know, we could either revise the median and, you know, lengthen that storage area, or I guess we could even, you know, look at it, maybe we can, you know, because the median, you get your left turn lane and then it kind of widens out there. You know, maybe we could cut off some of that, that median and just stripe it so that the event, if you would need it for storage, at least you can, you know, continue to, you know, back traffic up without traffic essentially impeding the through lane there. So, so there's, you know, some things you could do there.
Northbound and?
But yeah, that is a concern because it, with that Hawk system, I think you are gonna have a longer cycle time there, you know, which is just gonna.
And this would be the northbound and southbound lane, turn lane.
Yep.
Okay. Mayor?
We were out in Idaho a couple of weeks back and Hawk systems are everywhere around Boise, Idaho. Had my brother-in-law in the car as we traveled along one street that had two Hawk systems within about two tenths of a mile. Said we had a lot of fatalities or several pedestrian fatalities on this street and they had to do something, so they put in the Hawk system and now for several years, no fatalities. Driving through a Hawk system, and I know University Avenue has a couple of them and elsewhere in Grand Forks, if there is any, you know, nuance or learning, it's on the part of the motorist, it's not on the part of the pedestrian. And so you don't have third graders driving cars, so to me, that's irrelevant. You know, these are little kids, sure enough, but where you're coming in, it really feels like you're approaching a light that's about to turn red. Because first of all, there's no light and then it goes to yellow, maybe a quick flashing yellow, but these mostly, they went to yellow, which is to clear the intersection, and then solid red. And you're right, at the end of the solid red, it went to flashing red, which is equivalent to a four-way stop, which means you just sit there till the pedestrians are gone. It was really straightforward to utilize these things and, and it was very clear. It would go to yellow and men, clear the intersection, it would go to red, it would stop. Cars would stop as if at a red light. It was cut and dried. The yellow flashing that we have, it's a warning light. No one has a strict obligation to stop at a flashing yellow light. Of course, if there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk, we have a duty to stop, but the flashing yellow does not say stop. It says, heads up, there's something happening here. It's a cautionary signal. Where a solid red, which starts with yellow, clear the intersection, solid red, is cut and dried. So I really believe that a, a huge measure of safety could be added with the Hawk system for our kids crossing there.
Were those systems you seen, were they located at an intersection?
Some of them were.
Okay.
Yes, and I watched for that in particular because the old word from MNDOT was never at an intersection. The more recent word was they can go to an intersection.
The one thing that I think Steve was kind of pointing on with the education piece is we do have a grant that's open right now for the sidewalk on 20th. Safe Kids has $40,000 worth of non-infrastructure dollars to use on education enforcement, those types of things. The one thing that we would want to do that Safe Kids has done before, you make a video of how a Hawk system works for both cars and for pedestrians. You make sure that the vehicles coming off of 13th are aware that if vehicles are stopped northbound and southbound, that means that there's a kid that's going to be, or a pedestrian is going to be entering. And so then, you know, that also indicates that they should stop as well. And then you just make sure that the school district has that available, that we run it a few times on our local stations, that it's sent out to all the parents and so that they're well aware of it. And that's the one way, you know, once people get accustomed to it, like you said, they'll completely understand it. It's not a difficult process to understand, but if they're shown it once and everybody's kind of given the barrage of the video, whether it be through the school district on here, sent out in emails, you know, shown on, you know, that open house orientations, I think they'll get it and I think it'll work just, you know, it'll work well. It'll work how it's intended. Plus, it wouldn't have a, like a traffic signal type of a situation where we're stopping traffic when there are no pedestrians there. It's really addressing what our need is, which is pedestrians crossing, so.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, I think that the education system on the, on the, you know, the vehicle side is probably manageable, but I do think that the, the harder concept is the education for the, the users, because I would, and I know anecdote isn't, you know, the plural of anecdote is not data, obviously, but I've seen on a number of times that that system never gets used. I, a week and a half ago, I watched a kid, probably sub-eight, on a little motorcycle drive right across the thing in front of a pickup. Didn't stop, didn't look, didn't push the button, didn't do anything. I mean, probably 100 feet in front of it, you know? So I would bet, and I don't know, I, I bet it gets used less often than it needs to be. And that's a problem, because what happens is, you know, you, you create this sense of security, the more you put up guardrails, and I don't believe that you can't put up any guardrails, but the more guardrails you put up, the more things, it just becomes another thing that doesn't get used and then creates this illusion of safety that I don't want to have either. So I just, I don't know. I can see doing something like it, but you better make sure that we're out there teaching kids how to use it and enforcing them and telling their parents to get them to use it, because I guarantee. it, because I guarantee if some kid gets hit out there, we're going to be the, the people that did it, you know? And like I said, I watch kids go through there all the time, either they cut the corner and they go from side to side, or they, they just go through, or, like I said, a lot of times, and maybe the Hawk is better with this because it's more delayed, but you'll have a group of kids go through, and then a kid will come through, you know, 15 seconds later because he's the, he's the straggler, or whatever he was, grabbed someone's hose and was drinking outside someone's house or something, decided to catch up, and then just zips across there. So like I said, there's zero, there's nothing that you can do to make that intersection 100% safe. And it's, it's a dangerous intersection because there's a lot of cars that go through there a lot of times. So, I mean, I don't know. I don't know if this is the answer or not, I just, I, I think, I just want to caution us against thinking that this is the, the solution.
And while I agree with you, the flashing light right now just notifies drivers that they're in, you know, that there's a passenger that's going to enter the roadway. I think part of the education would be that the kids would understand that if they push that button, it's going to actually stop traffic because red lights will show up. If they just are using flashing lights, and that's not for every kid, some kids just, they're going to get on their bike and they're going. But the flashing light is a very different situation than if they know that they push the Hawk system and it stops traffic. I know at UND, you know, just the people crossing across the road, it was all over the place at will whenever they wanted to. Now with the Hawk systems, it really is creating more of a, an area where people will cross, they feel safer, they are waiting for those lights, so. So it, it's, I mean, education goes every way, but I mean, the fact that we make the video, that's what I'm saying, is we're not just teaching the drivers, we're teaching the kids, because it has to come from the school district, so.
Mr. Helms?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm with Mr. Larson and the mayor, I think that, I happen to believe that our kids are pretty sharp. I think they can figure this out in a heartbeat. I believe that the, as they said, you know, it'd be more on the motorist trying to educate them than anything, get them off their cell phones and pay attention, you know, and, but maybe this is something that we should be talking with the school district on, and maybe they got some kind of funding or something that they could help with this project of some kind, because they, you know, they, I mean, after all, they're the ones that created this problem out there, so maybe they could help out a little bit, and so we can get this project going.
And what a great problem, a nice residential area right near our schools, you know, that's a really good problem. Love it. And let's make it safe.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Johnson?
Well, if it saves one child's life, it's money well spent.
Mr. Revo?
Kind of teetering on it, but I'm leaning more towards putting it in, no matter what we do, it's not going to have that 100% factor, it doesn't matter. I've seen the, the results of not being inattentive driving can cause accidents.
Yeah. I think I, it's, we have to do something out there, I think, working with the school, I think they're going to be on board. They don't have to hire crossing guards or have people be a crossing guard, like they're suggesting in MINDOT, which they've done already anyway. It's hard to get people to do it, we're low on staff anyway. So something that we do that would enhance the safety out there, I think we need to move forward, so.
Yeah, and as I, you know, mentioned, previous meeting, I put it in here too, I mean, MINDOT has said that they would allow us to use our state aid allocation dollars, which we do have a pretty good balance in there right now, so. Again, I guess if, you know, someone wants to talk to the school and they're willing to help participate in this, that'd be great too, but. So, and then like I think I mentioned before too, you know, being we are wanting to use our state aid dollars, I mean, MINDOT is going to require, you know, full set of plans and specs, they got to be reviewed by MINDOT, signed up by MINDOT, so. So really then, you know, probably what we'd be looking for at the next council meeting then, would be your approval to, you know, proceed with plans and specs for this project, so.
Sounds good.
Good.
Anybody else have anything? If not, we'll move on. Thank you, sir. Move on, number five, consider awarding annual sewer cleaning, Mr. Swordall.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something that we do annually each year. Cities split into like five different areas. We went out and asked for, request for proposals from four different companies, we got three of them that responded. Pipe detectives was the low. I guess I'm asking to hire pipe detectives for $47,251.46 to clean our sanitary sewer, mostly in the northeast in a town, in our troubled areas. This year, we won't need to televise everything because we've had that done now for the, for the most part all around town, but there's about 2,000 feet of sewer in three different areas that we'd like to televise, just because we've either had problems there, or there are areas that are suspect of problems, so. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Helms?
Just one, Mr. Swordall, where, where is pipe detectives at? Or did they, where are they from?
They're, I believe they're on a Fargo, either Fargo or Moorhead.
Okay, I'm just curious, thank you.
And I just have one, one other thing. Off subject, we are going to be out tonight at 3:00, 3:00 AM flowing, so.
Sounds good. Anybody else have anything? Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move on to number six, review bid results for fire station one roof replacement and library roof repairs, Chief Bushy and Charlotte?
Council President and Councilman. So this is a joint request for council action between Ms. Helgeson and myself in regard to repairing the library roof and, and replacing the roof at Station One. So we had a bid opening last Wednesday, and I'd like to go over the results of that, I'll be referring to the bid tabulation. We asked the contractors to bid it three ways. One would be with the ballast system for the fire station, and then the Campbell Library, and then the alternate would be an adhered system for the fire station. We had three bids submitted, one was disqualified because their bid was not complete. And if you look at the other ones, I'll go through. One of the contractors is from Minneapolis, the other one is from Fargo. So the first one being the ballasted EPDM for the Station One, all-weather roof came in at $3,930,000, $295, $295. The next one was Dawson roofing, they came in at $600, $695,000. So the apparent low bidder there is all-weather roof. For the library, Ms. Helgeson, you want to go over that one?
Sure. The only one bid came in that was, that met our standards, and that was for $34,750 to put the heat tape and repair the damage on the roof.
And that was all-weather roofing as well?
And that's all-weather, yes.
Then the alternate for the fire station was the adhered, all-weather came in with the only bid for that one, and that was $489,780. So with that, kind of, where are we with the budget on this project? Both of these projects were planned in the capital improvement plan for 2022, although the price tag of the fire station rose some concern. So I reached out to Mrs. Anderson, and she looked at the project, she reviewed it, and she came up with a plan that said we could go forward with this as long as council approved it. So with that, my recommendation is to award all-weather roof with the contract to do an adhered system on the fire, on the fire station. And I, Ms. Helgeson is in, is recommending that the contract be awarded to all-weather for the repair of the library.
Are those projects tied?
Pardon me?
Are they tied, or are they individual?
Well, the way we did this, just to save money on the construction administration, is they are tied together.
What was the plan to gain another $200,000 or $250,000?
I think I'll defer that to Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. As you're aware, the water and light has increased the amount that they're giving us every year for our building maintenance, it's at 350 now. And at the end of 2021, we had a balance of over $200,000 in there because that account is fluid, the money keeps rolling from year to year, it depends if a project is completed or not. And if you look on our capital improvement plan, you know, we put things in for every year, doesn't mean we're really going to do them, but sometimes they get pushed back because of, for example, we've been pushing back the windows at City Hall just because they're not as bad as we thought they were going to be. So I did check with parks, we had planned to do HVAC system at Senior Center for about $85,000, and they're what, 36 weeks out to get... 48 weeks to get the materials, so we pushed that back to 2023. There's a couple other things that we did that, so my projection is if we do the project we have planned for 2022, by the end of 2022, we still have a positive balance, and then we'll get another 350 in on the 1st of January. So, you know, we just set it up so that we make sure that, you know, if there is a negative balance, it's not much, and it gets picked up in the next year immediately. Any other questions on that?
Do we have additional roofing projects that we anticipate in the next couple of years?
Yes, that's, we did hire, we did have them inspected last year, and so we have that in our plan on when we will, you know, will replace those. So the only thing on that is that since fire is kind of the guinea pig, and we see where the costs are, we probably just have to increase the costs and what our estimates and the other ones are too. I know we're looking at City Hall eventually, so we, we know that's even a bigger roof than the fire station, I believe, and so we just have to plan that accordingly.
So with the additional $100,000 that the water and light decided to... That was already in the budget, so what are we removing for the budget? Are we just, we're just not?
Well, we're, we're just kind of postponing other projects, so, you know, like in 2023, and I haven't even talked to Jason yet, but, you know, we hoped we could put the fuel tanks in there. Okay, well, we'll probably push those back to 2024, because that's at 215 where, you know, we can get some of the other buildings done, you know, we can get the heating, air conditioning done on other buildings. And if it's still working, you know, they're still dry, it's saving the roof, so, you know, we'll just work with the department heads on where we are in projects, if there's repairs we can do to some things to keep them going for another year or two, we do work on those things. And luckily, you know, we've had this capital improvement plan in place, so, you know, we can look to see what things there are that we need to do, and, okay, we're okay, we can push that back, or... And, you know, like I said, it changes according to what's available, according to... I know when we looked for roofing, the consultant we hired called all of the roofers in the area, and none of them wanted a bid because they were busy, they didn't have enough employees to do more, and so they didn't even bid on it, so, you know, that is the climate we're in, and so that might happen with a lot of projects we're going to do, so we just got to pick and choose and see what we can get done and, and what we have money to do.
So is this basically going to put the department heads a notice that no capital improvements? Something comes up, I mean, then, something comes up, then where are you going to tell us where the money's going to come from? Does it come from the reserves?
Right, and at this point, you know, I, you know, we've been upgrading our buildings when we can, and so I think we're actually in pretty good shape if, and they can all speak for that, but, yes, yes, yes. And, and they do, and they do, you know, when there's something comes up, they'll, they will call me and say, you know, where we're at, you know, where, this just broke, so, but thank you, it was a good question. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know some years back, we had water come in our police station, and it adds a lot of costs and confusion, and really disrupts the work that we need to do as a city. I know we won't let that happen again. And to the dollar, if you end up with water coming into your space, it would make some of these dollars look like chump change. So I think if this is our next priority, we take the dollars we have and we apply it to our next priority, and if things are just more expensive than we thought, we will have to just work through our priorities in order to the best that we can.
Mr. Helms?
Thank you. Chief, this, this recommendation is the, is the better one, correct? That's got the better warranty and everything for the...
Correct. The, this adhered system, you can expect probably about a 10-year extra life to it, so when you do the math, it just comes out to be cheaper per year, even though the upfront cost is, is substantial. But per year for the life of that roof, it's better than the ballasted.
Right. And then the library, we've had so much trouble with that roof at the library, so it needs to be, that needs to be done bad, and hopefully we'll cross our fingers that they're on top of this thing, and they, this is going to solve the problem, but it's, it's, it's got to have something done there for sure.
I guarantee it won't solve the problem.
I don't know, it might not, but hopefully, I mean, we got to try something.
It's been a problem that's what, 25 years old, or 24 years old now?
Well, we, we keep working on.
I'm just saying, it's, it's more of mitigation than a solution, I would say.
The roof spec went through all of the history of all of our repairs and said we need to get this done right now, and at least it should prevent the immediate problems, so.
And I, like, just to be clear, I, I agree with the mayor, like, roofs are important systems in our buildings, but I just, the, the gist of my thing is, or my question is more on the fact that we have $250,000 a slop in our budget, and that's what worries me.
One thing I would like to add, though, it's not just a roof that they're doing, they're adding four inches of insulation, they're taking care of our lightning protection, which is in dire need. They're adding some water drainage to it, which will help the life of it, and then they're also taking care of some guidelines for our radio towers. So that adds into the, the cost of the roof work.
Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Gordy, want me to mention, reminder, if you want to sign up for the East Grand Forks World Childcare Innovation Town Hall event, which is on April 25th at 6:30 at the prohibition room, there will be a link on our website, or you can give Mr. Gordy a call to sign up for it. Entertain a motion to a juror.
Ooh!
Who'd that judge? All say we say aye.
All right, guys.
Oh, same sound, it's Karen, needs a jury.